Good evening, everybody. We're gonna call our meeting to order, our committee of the whole meeting for February 23rd. You've had a chance to look at the agenda. Any additions to the agenda? Is the agenda okay? Seeing no additions, can I have somebody approve the agenda? Thank you, Counselor Digdon. Or did you have something to add?
Yes, I did.
Sorry.
No, sorry, it's there.
It's already there?
I believe so, yeah.
Okay.
Thank you, yep.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay, can I have somebody move the agenda? Thank you, Counselor Digdon. Can I have a second or? Warden Muse, thank you. All those in favor signify by raising your hand or saying aye. Contrary-minded? Motion carried, thank you. So, number, is there a conflict of interest? To declare tonight, anybody have a conflict of interest? Okay, seeing none, we'll move forward, and if you have a conflict along the way, you can declare it at any time. We've had regrets from Counselor Calvin Donfremm. Everybody else, I think, is here. Okay, good. So, next on our agenda is a presentation by Michelle Amiro, CBDC Services. So, you are up.
Great, thank you. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. I'm gonna share my screen for the presentation.
Yeah.
You'll let me know if you see the presentation.
We see it.
Perfect. Alright, I gotta get used to trying to move the slide at the same time as I'm speaking, but I will, I'll handle it, I'm sure. First of all, I wanted to say thank you to everybody for allowing me to speak to you tonight. I really do appreciate your time. Here we go. Back in November, I, here's gonna, back in November, when I tuned into the Facebook Live for the swearing-in of the new council, I heard many of you mention economic development as one of the top priorities for the communities that you represent. I, Community Business Development Corporations, here's a minute here. Community Business Development Corporations, or CBDCs, for short, are committed to the very same things, fostering economic development in rural communities, and in my case, or our case, Yarmouth County, through financing in the form of loans, business management training, and advisory services to small business. So before I tell you a little more about the programs and services that we offer, I thought you might want to know a little more about the CBDC Yarmouth, or the history of CBDC Yarmouth. So, we've been around for quite a while, since 1985, and during this time, we've invested lots of money in our community, about thirty, over thirty-four thousand, about thirty-four million dollars, into small business ventures in Yarmouth County, which is pretty amazing if you consider the average size of our loan is roughly forty thousand dollars. Our staff is very knowledgeable and eager to speak with folks about business, about their business ideas or plans for expansion, and they're really vested in helping, they're really committed to helping our communities grow as well. So, I've included some photos, some of them recent, some of them not so much, but of our staff, and so you can have a familiar, get familiar with some of our staff. So, on to information about our programs, and I've included this slide here that shows our tagline, which is financing training advice, and when you think about CBDCs, if you think about it from that perspective, it pretty much sums up everything we do. And so I like to show people this kind of logo, because when you think CBC, then you can think business, and the things that we offer are financing, training, advice, and I'm gonna talk more about that. First of all, I'm gonna speak about the financing programs that we offer. So, I offer loans up to one hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and sometimes we can go to two twenty-five, depending on the circumstance. I wanted to mention that there is no minimum amount that we have. So, if you needed a loan for three thousand dollars, for instance, we certainly can accommodate that. Our loans are available to any sector, any size, any business model, and we offer, and what sets us aside from traditional financial institutions is that we offer flexible repayment terms, seasonal payment schedules if required. A common misconception that people have about CBDC and our programs is that we're only offer them to startups, to business startups, and as you can see in this chart that I've included on this slide, is that last fiscal year, over half the loans that we approved were to existing businesses, so either to expand or to maintain their businesses, or whatever they're going through. Also, I've included a photograph here on this slide of Shane and Christina, who are the Economic Development, the officers that do loans, applications, and they provide them an analysis of an application to our board of directors, who is made up of local volunteers, who know the area really well, and make final decisions on all the loan applications. So, local decisions are made, are right here, about businesses that are, that are in our areas. Over the past few months, we've been really busy in our office with the Regional Relief and Recovery Fund, and we've provided loans to businesses financed, who've been financially impacted by the pandemic, but we're not eligible for the SEVA loan. I just wanted to let you know that there are still funds available for this program. It's an online app. You go on the cbdc.ca website. If anybody is not comfortable with going online, I would just encourage anyone to reach out to our staff. They're really, they wanna help everyone out, and those that don't feel comfortable with putting or going online certainly can reach out to us. As changes are made to this program, we update our social media and the website as well, so just stay connected through that, but we do still have funding available. Another question that we often get asked is, are there any grants available for business startups? And the quick answer to that is no. But we do have a program called the Self-Employment Benefits, or SEV, and I have a slide up for that, that allows you to collect EI-type benefits for a period of forty-six weeks while you start up your business. There's no holdback for benefits if you do make business income. The program is intended to help participants focus on their business and not worry about how they're gonna pay their personal bills. So, there is training element to the program that helps people get business management skills and help them have the tools to not just get through the first thirty-six weeks, sorry, forty-six weeks of the program, but to continue into the future. We've found this is a really helpful program for startups, and Jose Dulong is our program coordinator, and she'll help anyone navigate the application process. Onto our training programs. So, a large part of what we do at CBDC is, is training. We want to give people the skills to properly manage their businesses into the future. So, we've got a program, I know I've listed what it's called here, it's called the Entrepreneurial Training Program, Entrepreneurial Training Fund, and we have a, it covers ninety percent of the cost for training initiatives, like bookkeeping, marketing, HR, social media. If your business needs maybe a little bit more than training, and you could use a consultant to take a deeper dive into a new market, for instance, or you wanted someone to take a look at your business and give you a diagnostic on where you could gain more profits, for instance, we can, we can get, we can cover the cost of a consultant to come in and do that type of service, it's called the Consulting Advisory Service, and that is up to a maximum of five thousand dollars. And for any of these programs, it's very simple, you just reach out to any of our staff and set up an appointment to get started, and, and it's just as simple as that. The third pillar of our programs and services is advice. Of course, this is free of charge. All our staff are able to guide you through the business planning process if you require help with that, and/or point you in the right direction. If it's maybe a question that we can't answer, we certainly push you into the right, into the right direction, so that you can get the answers that you need. And finally, how do you find us? Where are we located? We're at the Pier One Complex, we're in downtown Yarmouth. You just give us a call, and Tricia would be happy to schedule you with an appointment with one of our friendly staff. And I guess at this point, I'd like to take the opportunity and invite the counselors to our office for a tour. If you're interested in something of that nature, I know COVID rules apply, but as long as you're able to wear a mask and, and sign in, we would think it's a great opportunity to know, to know more about the local CBDC and see our office. So, when you're out and about talking to some of the, some of the people in your community, then you know exactly where you're telling people to go, and, and then you can say that you've been there, and, and if you think about business, you can think CBDC is what we hope. So, that's all for me. Just wanted a quick overview of the services we offer, so you can be more familiar with them. And if you have any questions, I'd love to hear them.
Excellent, thank you. Counselor Saret.
Michelle, what is your success rate? Do you have a percentage, success rate as far as default? And people that do make it, is default pretty bad, or is there a percentage?
Yeah, we have a, we have a percentage, and there are times, just like every, I guess, the economy, there's times when things go up and things are not so well, doing so well. So, I think for us, we have a pretty decent default rate at around the one percent mark. I know there's been times where we've been higher than that, around maybe four percent, which would have been when things were not doing so well. But yeah, I would say that that's where we hover around, the one percent.
Yes, if I may, Madam Chair, one more question. I know that you've helped, I was involved in one person going to see you, one or two, or some, some, some things in Tuskegee that, you know, and you provided this person with also some training in the accounting part and everything, and I know that person said you, it was a huge help, so you know what? You do a valuable service for the community, and I commend you for that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions, any other comments? Okay, seeing none, I wanna say thank you. What I like about these presentations is it always brings more information to us as counselors, because we do get a lot of questions from our public, and I will not remember everything you said today, but I will remember where I need to go, because I saw this presentation, so that's what I appreciate. So, thank you for taking the time to come see us today.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, next on the agenda, we have adoption of minutes, regular council meeting minutes, February ninth. Is there somebody who is willing to move those minutes? Counselor Digdon, do we have a second or? Counselor Saret?
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
On the minute. On page two, where it says, okay, that was during the, that was during the sidewalk, and it says, "All in agreement that we need to have a sidewalk policy regardless of if we decide to build sidewalks." I thought it was the opposite, that we had said that, that we wouldn't do a policy until we decided whether we're gonna do it. I'm not sure if I'm reading that right or not, but I'm wondering if that's just a bit of an error there, that, that all are in, all in agreement that, that we need to have a sidewalk policy regardless of whether we decide. I didn't think that's what we had decided, but anyway, I'm not sure. I thought we had said that there was no point in making, in doing a policy unless we knew where we're gonna be building, and that we were gonna discuss that at our strategic, or our priority setting session. So, maybe that's something that could be looked at.
Okay. Thank you for raising that. Counselor Saret?
Not to contradict you, but I'm gonna contradict you, Danny. I understood just the opposite of what you're saying. That's just my shot, I just cut off with the others, but I understood the opposite.
If I may?
Go ahead.
I think that was suggested, but I think after the discussion, we had said that there was no point in making a policy if we didn't know if we were gonna build sidewalks.
Right, and I think what, I think what it had come down to, we had originally, you're right, Counselor Saret, originally we had said, let's develop a policy, but then we said, if we develop a policy, that means we're kind, we're completely open to sidewalks, but we're not there yet. We still have some work to do around deciding whether or not we're going to, to look at sidewalks. Is that, do you agree with that, Warden Muse?
I agree with that, 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 it was, it was suggested that we do that. But I thought after we had discussions, that we had decided that, well, maybe a policy ahead of what we're gonna do is, is putting the, the horse ahead of, or the cart ahead of the horse, because we, we don't wanna make a policy if we don't know that we're gonna build sidewalks. All of a sudden, people say, well, there's a policy, I need a sidewalk, and if they follow within the policy, we're gonna have. But anyway, just when I read that, I thought maybe there was a bit of a misunderstanding in what was decided.
Right. Counselor Sonya, did you have something you want to add?
I think if I recall, Nicole, you, you mentioned that we moved the discussion to our priority sessions.
Yes.
And, and that we will discuss there, whether it will become a priority or, or, or a, or a policy.
Right.
I think that's what we all agreed on.
I agree. Yeah. So, we want, sorry, go ahead, CAO Muse.
No, I think, I think that, that that's correct. I think that the only consensus we landed on, on the discussion, is that it goes to priority session. Right. Can, I, I think that, I think we can make a slight amendment to that wording, but I would defer as well to the clerk, because the clerk has the recorded that discussion. So, while we all have a recollection, we have a recording, so we can check that. So, what we could do potentially, I might be asking Lori to do something here that could be problematic, but we could perhaps defer the approval of the minutes pending, and we can continue with the meeting and see if we can get a confirmation later on.
Okay. That's okay with everybody? Alright, okay, so we will move on, we'll come back to that one. Let's look at number five, business arising from the minutes. So, for five A, we have the Active Transportation Plan, and that was brought forward by Counselor Sonya. Would you like to speak on that, Counselor Sonya?
Sure, thank you. After our last discussion on the active plan, I, I went home and looked a little further, and I, I, I discovered that Camos Hill Trail was also not included in the transportation's plan, so it becomes more a District Two issue than just the Plymouth School issue. And as well, I kept reading different stuff, and in our municipal website, page four, it says that the final, that there's a final transportation active plan. Well, I, I feel that it cannot be final if District Two was not included. For any future references guided by the Active Transportation Plan would not lend support for District Two. However, I've read quite a bit into past material that the council has done back from 2008. And the, the strategic plan is almost like a precursor to the, to the Active Transportation Plan, and it's quite comprehensive. And there's a motion in there adopting this plan. I, I realize that I, I don't wanna spend any more money to include District Two into this plan if we don't have to. I think there's a lot of common sense that can be applied, that can be applied not just to the plan, but to our District Two. Everything I've read is almost a common sense approach to what the needs of each community is, and for the schools and for the trails. For instance, if my common sense would tell me that if Camos Hill needs an addition to the current action plan, they would join the wharf to the trail, which is only a few hundred meters apart. So, that's a common sense approach for me. So, all I'm saying is that I'd like to know why we were excluded from this plan as a, as a district. But I also understand that we as a council can incorporate District Two without spending any money. The only thing I will add to this is that the community was deprived of participating in this plan, so if they desire to have any questions answered, I, I would suggest that council would find a way to accommodate them.
Can I ask a question, a question of you, Counselor Sonya? Do you know if, so, the, was, were the residents of Camos Hill invited to a session? Because I know that the schools were invited, but I do remember when this Active Transportation Plan was, was kind of going on, and I attended a session, and there were very few people at that session. So, to give real feedback and data was difficult. However, there were some sessions, there was a session in Wedgeport that was very well attended. So, it kind of depended, so my, like, what I'm thinking in the back of my head is, were they invited and people didn't go, or were they not invited? That I'm not sure about. Yeah, me either.
I, I will, I will say this. In, in my small community of Plymouth, no one remembers being invited. To the people I've spoke, I haven't, I didn't speak to everybody. But again, again, I, without making this bigger than what it is, all, all, all I want is, is that, is that when, when the other districts in the municipality of Argyle are under any kind of consideration that Plymouth is not forgotten, or District Two.
Definitely.
And, and that, that, that if, if the people today want a session with council or representative of council, they, they should have that opportunity as well. I don't know if that's gonna happen. I, I have no idea.
Right. Absolutely noted, and I think if I'm reading into it, just to kind of regurgitate what you're saying, but I think your biggest concern, and maybe I'm wrong, but your biggest concern specifically is if we have a discussion about sidewalks, because I know that you had a group that came to council a few years ago, and I, I think what you're a little bit afraid of is that they'll be underlooked because they're not included in this plan? Is that kind of what I'm reading into it? Is that how you're feeling?
That was my, my narrow thinking at the beginning, and it, it, it's widened, I still believe that. But I also understand that Camos Hill was not mentioned in this plan either. And they are as much my district as Plymouth, so.
Right. Okay. So, duly noted. You're just, you're concerned that if we do have those conversations, you wanna be sure that they are included in those conversations as well.
Absolutely, yes.
For sure, and I, I don't think anybody on this council would omit District Two of any types of conversations like that anyway, but, but I understand where you're coming from, because you didn't see your representation in that plan, you just wanted to make sure that it was noted.
I, I, I do not put this on council whatsoever. I believe you guys have the integrity to do the right thing. All, all I'm saying in respect to, to the active plan and the recommendations, that they follow in line with all the rest of the, of the districts of Argyle, that's basically.
Okay. Sounds good. Anyone, yes, CAO Muse, sorry.
Just as a follow-up from the last meeting, we did reach out to Upland and have not had the opportunity to have a conversation with them, but I, we will, will have the conversation with them with this context in mind to see what their recommended course of action might be. And to Counselor Sonya's point, you know, not to spend money unnecessarily, but perhaps to get advice from, from them around the history and with this context in mind.
Right. Thank you. That, that sound okay, Counselor Sonya?
Thank you very much. Yes, it does.
Okay, sounds good. Okay, next. Five B, ground search and rescue. So, underground search and rescue, you will see that there is an attachment, there is a letter from Delmar Construction, so they went in and they did an assessment of the building, and they felt that the building, there are some repairs to be done, as ground search and rescue has been upfront with us about, but having done those repairs, they feel like the building is viable, that it will, once those repairs are done, it will, it will, it will last them, because that was our concern, right? What do we do? Do we put money into this, not knowing the shape of the building? So, I think we have some answers there. So, I asked to have this put on the agenda, because I'm sure that Warden Muse remembers the last meeting where I kept jamming and jamming. We talked about, we gave some funding already for our grants to organizations this year, but there are still two questions we have to think about. There's the, the regular funding year after year, the sustainable funding that they have to worry, not worry about, and there's the question, so that's the operations, and then there's the question of capital. The capital, and I mentioned this before, they are applying for grants. They're applying, they've been working with MLA Colton LeBlanc on a provincial grant application, so they're kind of waiting. That goes in the end of the month, they'll wait to see if they get anything there. So, in speaking with our CAO, we felt that maybe it's time that we put together all three councils on this one issue and, and design a plan. What are we doing? What do the other councils feel like they're going to do for sustainable funding? What do the other councils feel like they wanna do for capital? So, that's kind of up for discussion. Is there anybody who'd like to comment, questions? CAO?
Just a matter of logistics. So, you would have received the, a request for decision as well via email yesterday.
Yes.
Press refresh on your agenda, and you will find it there. It, it may not have been there when you initially opened it. So, if you press refresh, you might find an attachment of four pages that obviously is, is the document that you would have received yesterday. So, so, I want to just mention that before you got into your discussion.
Okay. Counselor Digdon?
Thank you. I was just looking, is there any way for the people that may be watching at home under computers that it could be brought up on the, I'm looking at the agenda here online, and I see that that document is not on there? That, those extra four pages, that's all I was just wondering.
I wonder.
Yes.
It, it should be there now, but I'm happy to share the screen to show this document.
Sure, if you wanna do that, that.
It's your, it's entirely your call.
Go ahead. You can share the doc, that way people can have the opportunity if it's not up.
Alright, just allow me a moment to, to do that. We'll say that there's information in this document that is already dated, and I, and it was prepared yesterday, so I, I'll mention, I'll mention those.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Counselor Saret.
So, if, if the CAO is putting up the document, if we have questions or comments, we'll wait till he's finished with his presentation? Is that the way to proceed?
That sounds like a reasonable way to proceed.
Thank you.
Can you see my screen?
Yes.
Okay. Alright, so, I'll proceed then. So, the, there's background information here on this document. And so first of all, I will say that you have already contributed eight thousand eight hundred dollars to the GSR, you did that the last council meeting, just for the, you know, the interest of people watching.
Can you get it bigger, Ella? Can you get it?
Pardon me? I certainly can. I certainly can. Yep, one moment. I'm gonna do one page. Zoom, zoom, zoom.
For some of all folks.
No, you have to tell me, because I won't know if you don't tell me. How is that?
A little more?
A little bit more, sure thing.
So, say good.
Oh, say good, but you have a little great, so let's do that. Yeah. Okay. So, so, so just, I'm, I'm not gonna read this information, certainly I'm gonna leave it up for people to read if they wish. Anyway, the eight thousand eight hundred represents a four thousand eight hundred increase from prior years, so you've slightly doubled this year. And I'll, and, and I might jump back and forth here in some of the information, but certainly, we, we were very, we were made aware by GSR that the, that the needs at that particular location, there were three major components. One was a new roof, one was the repair of the east, eastern wall, which used to be an interior wall. So, it's not really built properly, which is why it needs to be rebuilt. And the third is a new well, because their well had collapsed. They cannot do a drilled well there, though we would, obviously, everybody's interested, more interested in drilled wells in the, in this day of drought, but their, they would hit saltwater there. So, their only option really is a dug well. So, that certainly causes limitations for them in terms of water use, especially if there are drought issues. The current, so we, there were some issues raised at the regional table around the current location. Is, are we throwing, you know, just summary is, are we going, throwing good money after bad, or whatever that expression goes, but essentially, is, is the building. um, it essentially is, is the building done? That's the question that was asked legitimately by uh, elected officials. So at the end of the day, um, we'd asked G S A R to get Delmar Construction to take a look at the structural integrity of the building. I will say that they had absolutely zero to say about any environmental or, you know, building code concerns uh, or any other concerns from fire inspection or any of those inspections that a building inspector or a fire inspector or others would come in and do. This was solely structural. Uh, because I think the other issues, you know, you you should be able to mitigate by, you know, ripping out stuff and cleaning it and and doing those those kinds of things. Uh, but but certainly, the major concern was, uh, is this a structurally sound building? And Delmar uh, confirmed that after these repairs are made, that it can continue to be a structurally sound building. Though if we do nothing, it probably won't be.
Right.
Um, so the the some, to summarize what what staff heard at the council table is that we've heard a lot of positivity and uh, around the table, around the council, around wanting to support. Obviously, you've already done so from an operational perspective, but that was just for one year. Uh, what G S A R is asking for is stable operational funding so that they don't have to ask every year and they understand what they're getting from from us and and ideally, I suspect from all three parties, there would be a multi-year arrangement where they could have predictive funding. Uh, you know, we we criticize provincial and federal governments for that very same thing. So it's a pretty legitimate uh, point of view to say, look, we want stable funding. We don't know what we're gonna do from year to year. Hard for us to plan when we don't know. So it's, it's a legitimate concern. Um, so generally, there appeared to be consensus that um, that the ground search should not really have to apply for grants to organizations. I'm talking about this council, this council right away, I think, went to, well, why do they have to apply for grants, their emergency services organization? Um, that they, that you seemed to make them, or seem to think that they fit more around fire funding than they would nonprofit organization funding. And correct me if these uh, observations are wrong. Councils approached the positively the capital request. Um, but we have not had the opportunity to sit down with the town of Yarmouth and municipality to understand their concerns. We've received the information collectively, but we've not subsequently sat down and had a conversation about, well, what are you capable of doing? What are your concerns? What are yours? What are your goals? Um, have any indication either on operational funding, what they've done, though I will confirm that the municipality of Yarmouth went from um, they went from, uh, they doubled their funding. I think they went from, uh, correct me, I think it's, I think they they were at three, twenty-five hundred or three thousand in cash, and they went, and they doubled. So understand that they also have an uh, uh, an in-kind contribution in the taxes. So they write off their taxes every year and they consider that part of the contribution. Um, the province of Nova Scotia has been questioned on G S A R funding, which, which is not a high number. So the M L A, our M L A has approached government about why the funding is so low. Uh, we have not received an answer. I did want to specifically address a question that has been asked multiple times, which is what about an alternate location? And specifically, the one that kept being mentioned was the Yarmouth Airport. Um, the Yarmouth Airport doesn't have a ton of available space and has less available and appropriate space. Um, if what we know of G S A R is they do a lot of training, they need a lot of smaller rooms to do that training. Um, the combined services building has the capacity for that. In fact, it was constructed for that very purpose. The upstairs of of that building, uh, and when I say combined services, I mean, that's, that's the building that houses all of the machinery, the plow, et cetera. So it's a fairly big building and it's utilized almost to its capacity on the, on the downstairs, but at the upstairs there, there would be uh, capacity there for for use. Um, uh, the ground search has not expressed an interest in leaving. Um, they expressed a a a strong interest in staying, in fact, and and have indicated their reasons why. Um, we we don't, I don't, I couldn't tell you with certainty whether there, there would be e- enough space for them to store uh, some of their vehicles uh, at the airport. I I really couldn't tell you for sure. That would depend on the future of the airport and what our our consultants will recommend in terms of any sort of changes in 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 use. Uh, perhaps there, you know, I I know for a fact there'll be one less machine um, in the, in that facility. Perhaps that's enough room for G S A R, perhaps it's not. Um, and then I just mentioned quickly that, you know, if i- if if there was an agreement to to leave that facility or if that facility became unsuitable for G S A R and they were to move into the airport, we still have this issue of a building that is in municipality of Yarmouth's location. So I I can't say that I've done a in-depth analysis of the airport option. Um, for two reasons, largely, I don't think that was asked of of me to do.
Yeah.
Like that, uh, I think it was, it was part of council's due diligence to ask those questions. I I'm not sure it's impossible that they would go there, but um, but I'm not sure there would be an interest, it will certainly not be an interest on their part to to go. Um, so I stopped there essentially with that analysis. Um, we're looking at some of the capital uh, commitments that they presented at our regional council. The estimated cost for roof repair, new well and east wall is about a hundred and fourteen thousand dollars. I added a fifteen percent contingency to that number because we all know, you think you know until you dig and then you know for sure. Uh, so there were quotes given and I'm sure the quotes would be honored. But there's always an unpredictability around repair. Uh, this does not, that number does not include a secondary capital need for the repair of doors. Uh, and then the, and then of course, subsequent to the repair of the roof, you would, you would remove the damaged drywall, clean, there was more damage in there as we saw it for ourselves. That would have to be completely cleaned out. Uh, insulation replaced and redone. So that is an additional thirty-eight thousand plus H S T. Um, and initially, when I presented this, when I prepared this yesterday, ground search was going to do an application for funding for the secondary capital needs. But since have changed their position and what they'll be looking for from the province is funding support for the roof repair. So the roof repair and replacement is what the application will be to the provincial government. Uh, it's a competitive process. There's no guarantee they get anything. But they could get a maximum of fifty thousand, which is what they'll be asking for. Um, so I made a number of assumptions about if that's the cost of the project, what does it mean for Argyle? Uh, it's hard to know for sure. Because it depends on whether they get how much funding of their own that they can use, which has not been established. We don't know if they'll have any provincial support for that. So from my perspective, I really kind of have to assume the worst, which is of that first section, a hundred and thirteen thousand. Um, Argyle's contribution, if we use traditional cost sharing amongst the three units, would be in the thirty-five to thirty-eight thousand dollar range. Now that, I need to say it, it assumes you have three willing partners that agree that that's the percentage and that, and that they're all um, on the same page around supporting that particular project. Each unit is independent in their decision-making and we we respect that independence. Um, so so I think what we need to do is to sit down and understand, you know, where are the, where are the pinch points? Where are the places where we made the total agreement? And then where do we need to go if there are places that were not in agreement? Uh, and meaning with the other, it's not with G S A R. Uh, the operating analysis, I'll be a lot briefer here because it's a lot simpler. Ultimately, uh, if we look at their operations and I just received their financial statements today. So these numbers are, you know, they're accurate, but not, they're not current. So um, I would suggest that their fundraising is, is their primary
Mm hmm.
primary source of income. So the the last information that I took this, these percentages from their presentation. So um, sixty-four percent of their total income was fundraising and thirty-six percent was government grants. If you compare that to fire departments, it's completely opposite. So, you know, fire departments are in the eighty to ninety range and maybe even ninety-five funded by government. And then maybe a five to ten percent on fundraising, depending on their size and scope. So, uh, and then I, of course, some of you have already done this on your own, but then a quick check-in with neighboring G S A R organizations indicate that that what we provide to our G S A R is lower than what they would provide to their G S A Rs in that, in those counties. Now, every situation is different. So it's difficult to compare apples and apples and ultimately, it's, it's merely put there for illustration. Um, just to give you an idea of like, you know, the scope of what's happening outside of of our county. And so uh, obviously, any sort of contribution to G S A R is eligible under the M G A, because that's not an issue and not a question. And so the recommendation, I believe, uh, Madam Deputy Warden has already indicated that we need some direction from councilists to make steps. Um, there is a letter of support that you have approved for the application for funding for the province. I don't think there's anything else we need from council on that. Um, if council was ready to make a decision on its own on a capital contribution, which, which is not what I would recommend, but it is still entirely in your ability to do that. Uh, we would then give that information to the province as far as the application would be concerned. And then the application would show that they're getting money from another location. I think that I'm not sure if that was a summary, but it summarizes.
Yeah, no, thank you so much. Thank you for that. Um, do we have any questions, any comments? I can only see a few people though, so shout out if there's something you'd like to to add or any questions. Okay, I can see you all now. Counselor Serret?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, first of all, my, my first question would be to our C A O. And it's just, this is just for clarification on that. Uh, where it says M G A considerations? Okay. A- a- and again, it's just for clarification. It says specifically, section sixty-five allows contributions to nonprofit organization for services municipalities would have to otherwise provide. My question is, I guess, I know the M G A says we have to support or we have to provide uh, uh, fire, 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 fighting services. But does it say we have to to do ground search and rescue? Because that's my question.
Uh, I I think the answer to that question is no. I don't think you're, it is a a mandatory service provision.
Yeah.
And and what I meant by, what what I mean by that is that you can give money to a nonprofit organization that provides a service on your behalf. So if you choose to do, if you choose a ground search service, which, you know, you've indirectly done so by by funding.
Yeah.
Um, uh, you can certainly do that. I don't know that it's in a list of mandatory services.
Yeah.
But I do know that 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 I don't, I don't think there's any municipality in Nova Scotia that that doesn't have an association with a ground search and rescue organization. I think they exist all across Nova Scotia. And most of the time, I mean, they're funded. I mean, there may be municipalities that choose not to fund them. But municipalities do fund all G S A Rs across the province. Um, uh, and so I hope that's clear. You know, the the G S A R is really a, it's, it's a, it's a finger of the R C M P. It's, it's the R C P triggers the ground search and rescue services for search and rescue. And it's an entirely voluntary uh, organization, as you're fully aware. But it is, it is, it's attached to the R C M P, so there is an official duty that the G S A R organizations have.
Very good. And Madam Chair, if I could have a second comment there? And and yes, Allah, thank you for that, that does clarify. It was just, again, by all means, you're a necessary part, not even a question. Uh, my, my second point was, uh, this is to all counselors and my, my, my view is any funding that has to be done on the buildings or the the secondary repairs would require uh, the three units. That that's my stand. I definitely would want, would want to see that all three are involved. Not just us digging in our pockets and putting money in there. We certainly need the three units and I, and I think this is what the deputy warding what is trying to do is to bring us all together, which I would agree. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Sonia?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, this is almost more a comment and it might be a small question behind. To touch on what Allah just said, that uh, G S R or ground search and rescue is a finger of the R C M P. I I did a little bit of a research on on command centers and and there, um, some police departments have their own, uh, some ground search and rescue have their own. Some fire departments have their own. Uh, and I'm looking at this in terms of of tho- those three. And then I look at it in terms of what if we have a natural disaster such as a forest fire, uh, a huge hurricane flooding, uh, disaster at sea, I can go on. Um, there are many fingers I'm looking at, uh, you know, to to use I S terms. Is it possible to get all these different fingers to to help finance this, this, this uh, uh, quest we're on here? Because I I I think without uh, the command center, without ground search and rescue, someone would try to probably get one because it is needed. It is a definitely command center. And I know we're talking about the building here, but I'm thinking if we can get everybody on board in terms of funding, um, maybe there will be funding, it's, it's more, more a comment.
Yeah, I think policing, right? We contribute to policing. They have a budget. I I I, a- and I know in conversation with members of the Board of Ground Search and Rescue, they get money from the police if they are triggered. If they're not triggered by the police, then they don't get anything from them. So there probably is a small portion in their budget, but I'm not sure it's quite the number that that we're talking about in order to fund, right, capital for a building and everything else. It would be wonderful if that happened, but I'm not sure how we would get that valve rolling. I I really, I'm not sure. Are there any other comments or questions? So what is the the wish of council? Do we feel that, how how do other counselors feel about having a meeting with the other units as sooner rather than later to to have conversations about about capital? About about the operational? Okay, so will somebody make a motion to get that in on the go so that we can meet with all three councils? You're willing to make that motion, Counselor Serret? Seconded by Counselor Ward? Are there any other comments on the motion? Okay, question? All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Contrary minded, raise your hand. Motion carried. Thank you, everybody.
I think I saw Counselor Donaldson's hand go up before we made the motion.
Did you have a question? Sorry, did I miss you?
No. It was answered.
Okay, sorry about that. I didn't see you. I'm not ignoring you.
I'll use this for the next time.
Okay, I can see that.
Deputy Warden, before we move on to the next item, I just wanted to clarify that I've looked at the minutes from February ninth.
Yes.
And made changes uh, to that section that'll say, conversation regarding putting sidewalks on the capital plan. A priority-setting meetings will need to happen first before a policy is created.
Okay.
If that's okay with council.
Okay.
I'll change that. Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you. So we will now, I guess, kind of flip-flop backwards a bit to approve that amendment in our minutes. Is that that's okay? So you're willing to make that motion, Counselor Dinkin? Yep.
I I made the motion and I'd just like to put with the corrections noted.
Right, okay. Do we have a second there on that? Warden Muse, thank you. All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Contrary minded, raise your hand. Oh, that motion is passed. Thank you. Thank you for that. Lori? Okay, next, we have um, number six for decision and discussion. So for six A, we're gonna start with, um, our planner is going to make a presentation. So there is an attachment and we're gonna turn it over to So for six A, we're gonna start with, um, our planner is going to make a presentation. So there is an attachment and we're gonna turn it over to you, Jared. Do you have a question, um, Counselor Butrow? You're muted.
I see, uh, five A. We, did we skip five A or?
I may have.
Water, uh, wastewater project.
I don't have that. I saw that originally. I'm gonna re, I'm gonna refresh.
It was originally on the agenda.
Okay.
Um, there was nothing significant to report on the ID.
Okay.
So we decided rather than tell you that, we would take it off, but then now we told you that. So maybe we just leave, put it back on.
Cause I, you're right. I do remember seeing you there. Okay, so Jared, um. Are you ready to make your presentation?
Okay, so these are for the people we missed at the planning advisory committee meeting, um, that's right before this meeting of council. Okay, so we have a resoning application. It's for subject property in the desk point road. Uh, near the desk point wharf and lower west pubnico. The property is currently vacant. Uh, it's undeveloped, what are, it's called marine industrial zone land. So it's split zoned, uh, marine industrial zone in front of the property on Dennis point road and mixed use zone in the rear of the property. The site itself is just shy of five acres. The area to be rezoned is the marine industrial portion of the front of the property, which is just over three acres. The property franchise itself is just above fourteen meters. Um, so as I mentioned, it's undeveloped and you can see kind of a, a site picture here of the front of the property, assigns a post on the property, informing residents the proposed landys by law amendment application. Skip that one. Um, the applicants are Owen turned on Owen and Sherman Dontrumon. Uh, the applications for zoning to light industrial zone to enable micro canvas production processing facility. Uh, so that's under the federal cannabis act requirements that limits the cultivation area, that type of license. Uh, since two hundred square meters is the, the cap put in place for that. Um, zoning however, as well as kind of the federal cannabis act is my understanding, um, permits the possibility of multiple licensed operations. So kind of multiple buildings that you have, um, like fire separations between them to enable, um, multiple permits essentially on a single property. Uh, if that did ever come, come to pass, just for kind of council's information.
Excuse me, Jared?
Yep.
Sorry, were you going to share that presentation on the screen with?
Oh yeah, sorry, it's not.
Okay.
Going forward. Yeah, thank you.
I know some of us have already seen it, but especially for the public too.
Oh, I appreciate that one moment here. Looks like I had an error and I missed it. There we go. Okay, I'll just go back a slide. Two, uh, so it's the front view of the property there. I'll do a quick view. So that, as I mentioned, it's split zoned. It's marine industrial on the front and mixed use zone in the rear of the property. The site, the portion that'd be rezoned is in teal there, which is the marine industrial portion. Um, so that's really kind of the, the area in question. That's proposed to switch forward. Okay, um, so they did mention split zoned. Um, the front portion would be going from marine industrial, light industrial zone, and then the rear portion that's mixed use zone would remain. Um, the proposed use, um, is for a building which size is still a bit in flux. Um, that's cause they're kind of early on in the application process. Um, so it'd be approximately seven thousand eight, eight thousand square feet of gross floor area of twelve bays of, um, as you've shown here, which are basically referred by shipping containers. Uh, could either be a one-story building or a two-story building. If it was the one-story option, the applicant's looking at a hundred and twenty foot by sixty foot building. And if the two-story be about eighty by sixty, um, feet uh, with double stack, so a two-story building essentially, as shown in that image to the right. Um, and it's proposed to be self-contained grow pods, as I mentioned, for a micro cannabis production facility. Uh, this is showing the site again, just in context with the zoning around. So really kind of everything on the desk point road. Kind of fronting in that areas, marine industrial zone with that mixed use zone to the rear. Uh, in the staff report and the agenda for council, um, is reporter, a table in the back and appendix be listing the evaluative criteria. Um, existing policies, the municipal planning strategy allow council to consider amendments to landys by law regulations without requiring amendments to the missile plan and strategy policy as both of the zones, both the marine industrial zone and the light use, um, industrial uh, zone share the rural center designation, which is essentially the policy area in the missile plan. So the applications enabled by policy thirteen eleven two of municipal plan as well. Um, so really the applicant seeking to rezone the portion of the properties owned marine industrial, light industrial and the proposed use a canvas production processing facility is currently not permitted in the marine industrial zone. Um, so the proposed amendments really to amend the zoning map of the documents, uh, to switch it out for that zone to, um, change that portion of the property, uh, to light industrial. Uh, and the proposed amendment, if it proceeds, um, would allow a canvas production processing facility for a micro use uh, as well as cultivating and processing, um, on the property subject to meeting citing requirements. So that's just the typical zoning requirements you'd have like front yard setbacks, side yard setbacks and so on. Just a bit of information about kind of this use. Um, a lot of people haven't seen like a, like one of these type of buildings before. Um, so the kind of the Delta nine container shown below is actually what the applicants propose to use for these. So it's, as I mentioned, it's basically a shipping container, uh, self-contained and then it's within a building. Um, both of, both the building itself and the containers themselves have carbon filters associated with them, uh, to help with odor control uh, for when the plants bud. Uh, and really the buildings themselves tend to look like any kind of like office or warehouse building. They, they look pretty innocuous from the outside. There's a number of requirements that are under the cannabis act with the federal government need to meet, uh, in terms of security and, um, the ability to cut off plants in case there was like, say an infection. Or a disease to the plants themselves. It doesn't affect, like you'll get pests, essentially things like that. Uh, which is why these kind of self-contained, uh, shipping container options tend to be quite popular. So if approved, the subject property would be permitted to grow cannabis and it would be also permitted to do processing cannabis for wholesale as a licensed producer. And also if they did decide to go for that, um, that license type that could sell cannabis for medical purposes. Um, so those would be to people authorized by health Canada practitioners. Um, this amendment would not permit the commercials consumption or sale of cannabis, like recreational cannabis sale. Um, that still, of course, still goes through an S L C as we're all familiar with. Um, the federal cannabis act requirements, um, any building used for cancer production or processing is required to have systems to filter air to prevent the escape of odors associated with cannabis to the outdoors. Just cause this is often something that comes up in terms of questions. Uh, license under the cannabis act are valid for a maximum of two years and they're not automatically renewed. Um, and really, so if you did any kind of compliance issues with kind of the odor control requirements of the cannabis act, um, it's a quite a strong preventative measure for any sort of recurring issues because there's a potential there like license not being renewed. Um, as I mentioned before, um, because the properties are split zoned. Um, this site itself is actually quite a bit of ways for any existing residential building is about four hundred and forty meters away. Um, and just a bit of a, because of these rezoning applications always get evaluated and looked at based on like the policies that municipal plan. I have a bit of con- context for that. So the rural center designation, which is that policy destination, as I mentioned earlier, that underlines those zones in the municipal plan. Um, they recognize that the area near the wharf, um, it's primarily for marine industrial uses. Um, and light industrial uses are also permitted in that same destination area. Um, kind of overall, there's quite a bit of marine industrial land that's not developed at present. So there's quite a supply that could be used if we kind of need to have any additional, let's say freezer facilities or things like that in the area. Um, and that, because of that, staff and W S P feel there's an ample supply of land for, um, the near term. Um, for marine industrial development and this site could be rezoned, uh, without really violating that policy intent to have, uh, land available for industrial uses. Um, so really the rezoning application is seeking to kind of maintain an industrial use, but switching out of maybe a marine focused use more towards a cannabis production facility use. Um, in terms of public engagement, uh, staff will comply with the public participation policy with the municipal plan and I'll outline those in a bit. So there was a public hearing under the municipal government act that we required for this. So that's really an opportunity for the public, um, to have the final yes, no, uh, decision, uh, conversation. And of course, leading up to that, we're, we're gonna continue to follow it up the policies and the plan and then any comments we receive from the public. Um, so certainly if anybody has any questions or comments, it's certainly encouraged them to get in contact, um, with Lori. He's kind of the initial point of point person for a lot of these questions. Uh, then we can help kind of compile and answer any questions people have leading up to the public hearing. There's also a sign placed on the property on February first, just notifying residents that the application's been received. Um, another thing to note is there's a, a public mail that we're planning on sending out. So just a quick little kind of summary letter uh, to property owners with a hundred and fifty-two meters of the property. Um, just to kind of let everybody know in case they miss the sign. Um, and there's also a, a notice of the public hearing that's will be going out in the vanguard, uh, two weeks prior to the public hearing. Uh, so really right now, if you look at the process diagram below, the application's been made. Uh, the initial public notification's gone out both on the property with the sign and the newspaper. Uh, we're kind of mid-evaluation now, uh, leading up to the public hearing, which is the, eventually the approval or refusal of the application. And there's also a appeal period that will follow that. So, um, appeals for rezoning applications can evaluate based on those, the policies, the municipal plan. Um, and then that process starts when an ad goes in the paper, uh, following the decision of council. Um, if it is an approval, so there's a two-week period for that as well, which would go to the U A R B. And their decisions are ultimately based on whether or not council followed their own policies, municipal plan. Uh, the recommendation, this is one from planning advisory committee that council give first reading to the application and they authorize uh, staff and W S P to enable public hearing. And that's it for me. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So for those who aren't aware, we had a meeting of the, the P A C before this meeting and we, we went over that presentation with Jared. Um, the developers were there, members of the public were on the P A C were there. And after listening to all of the information, having conversation, we did, uh, put forward the recommendation uh, that Jared has provided for us to give first reading to the land use, uh, uh, bylaw amendments to rezone a portion of the subject site along Dennis Park, Dennis point road from marine industrial zone to light industrial zone to enable micro cannabis production processing facility for the purpose of enabling a public hearing. So by doing that, we bring that forward to you to let you know that that was the recommendation that we made, but that ultimately has to come by motion from council in order to approve that. So that will trigger staff to do the next step of the process, which is the public engagement piece. Do I have that right? Does that sound right? Okay.
That was perfect. Yep.
Okay.
It's really like, I think the, a good thing to note here at this, this point as well is really, um, we're kind of in the valuation process. The public hearing is really right before we do the yes, no decision of council. So if there is any questions or comments, it really is quite helpful to get those earlier. Uh, rather than like the same evening, essentially the decision gets rendered, right? That's, um, I think it's just something valuable to point for the public.
Yep. Any comments, any questions? Counselor Dinkin?
Uh, the only thing I was gonna say is I'd be willing to put that into a motion. And that's, uh, what, all we're doing right now is just following, following proper procedures of what we have to do as a council.
Absolutely.
I feel so, so I'd definitely be willing to put that, uh, recommendation into a motion and, uh, and go from there.
Okay, do we have a second on that motion? Counselor Bork, thank you. Any comments or questions on that motion? Counselor Saret.
Uh, this question will go to Jared. Jared, uh, when it comes to a, a public hearing, uh, public hearing, I've been to quite a, quite a mess with agriculture on these public hearings where they're all held in private. Nobody knows what's going on. So what do you, what do you call a, a public hearing? I'd like to know what kind of recommendation you have to that? Is that something that's held in Halifax or in Toronto, or is that something that's held in the community of public?
In terms of location, well, um, right now it's, it's often gonna be held online, uh, just for all the COVID requirements, of course, but um, we could do it both either online or in person or some combination of the two is typically what's being done, right? Um, this is the first one I think we've had since the COVID requirements have come into play. Uh, normally it's, uh, where we can make it work. It's a combination of the two. So normally there's a pre um, kind of a, a pre-registration process. Let's call it that. We'd, we'd ask people to kind of pre-register for the, for the, um, the public meeting itself. Uh, so we can, of course, do social distancing and all those things, right? Um, that's typically what's kind of going on kind of throughout the country is all this stuff is going on. I, I think that is that the answer that right? You kind of cut out for a minute there.
Right, right on. Yes. And Madam Chair, I had a second question.
Yes, go ahead.
Uh, when you said the letters had to be sent to, uh, any resident that was, uh, within a hundred and fifty meters. What about the red cap restaurant, uh, that's would be a commercial? Would they have been sent a letter also? Would they be sent where they're commercial? Or are they quite far? Maybe Counselor Dinkin knows how far they are from that, uh, from that site. Not the red cap, the Vernon Deon, I'm sorry. Vernon Deon.
Vernon Deons maybe about a quarter of a kilometer or so. Um, from this, from that place, maybe a little more from, from that land, I should say. Yeah.
Thank you, Counselor Dinkin.
Uh, go ahead. Go ahead, Counselor Dinkin. Sorry, go ahead.
Uh, thank you. And if I may, uh, because of, um, the COVID going on and not doing business like we normally do sometimes, uh, I wonder if there could be a notice sent out. Uh, possibly by drafted up by our C A O, uh, to inform everyone that we could share on our Facebook page or whatever to inform, uh, anyone that may be interested, cause although they may not be a resident that's within a hundred and fifty-two meters or so, I believe it was. They may have a, some land or something, uh, there and they may want to make a statement about it. So just to put it out to the public that we're not trying to hide anything or nothing like that. And again, like I'm saying, I'm not saying I'm for it. I'm not saying against it, but I'm saying we do have to go through the proper channels to, to make this right.
Right. So would that be something that we typically do? C A O Muse, is that part of our? I guess that's like the, the advertising of the public engagement piece. Is that what you're, you're referring to, Counselor Dinkin?
Exactly.
Okay.
Because he, I'm even looking now at, uh, them stating that they put it in the notice possibly in the vanguard. Um, right now I believe the vanguards having some trouble as far as, uh, with distribution and people buying, you know, the paper and stuff like this. So, um, and a lot of people don't, uh, get the vanguards. So this is just an extra step that we would take as council to inform everyone out there that may be interested in this.
Yes, yes.
Uh, so the public engagement that, uh, that Jared, uh, refers to is the minimum requirement for public engagement as set out by the municipal planning strategy. Uh, the municipality can exceed that in any way, shape or form. So, uh, certainly I know there that, that COVID and Zoom provides for limited exposure. Uh, we know that, uh, it, it actually in some ways is, is a good thing because some people don't necessarily want or have access to leave their home or, so there are, it has its pros and cons, no question. So I think to your, to answer your question on, on Facebook, absolutely. Anytime we've put an ad in to the, uh, the, the vanguard, I would say in the last, I'd say twenty-four months at least, uh, we, we post as well on our Facebook site. Um, we will commit as a municipality, not just to write to the residents among the one fifty meters. We will, we will get our GPS, G I S tech to look at the addresses that we have on file. Um, that we can send a letter saying this is happening, whether they're a resident or not. Um, we're, we're willing to do that as well. Then, you know, uh, certainly um, the developer probably appreciates that as well because the developer wants to make sure that the community understands what's going on just as much as council wants to, to do that. So, um, you know, it, it is a smaller community, but, uh, but, but never underestimate, uh, the ability for people not to know, uh, what's going on and because we see it, um, and we do, we The ability for people not to know what's going on and because we see it and we do, we do what we can. So we will exceed the minimum requirement. We will put the Facebook ads in. We will contact those commercial and residential properties within that, that bubble. And I would even suggest that appropriately. Placed ads at the local co-op and other places where people have a tendency to congregate is also. An acceptable idea. You put, you put them at, at the Vernon Deals. You know, you put little papers right in there. I mean, geez. If the fishermen don't, don't see it there, they won't see it anywhere like that's. So we'll do all of those things. We will prepare a plan and we'll make sure the council's aware that here's the minimum requirement and here's where we're gonna be. You know, I hope that. You know, alleviates any sort of concerns that you might have as a council.
I think so, absolutely. Yes, Councilor Dinkin?
Thank you. There's one word I've referred to it a couple of times in the past and I'll refer to it again here this evening. Full transparency or two words, I guess, for transparency. And I would like if we would go above and beyond what's, what's asked of us as a council to make sure everyone knows what's going on.
Sure.
Thank you.
I understand, yeah, completely. Councilor Donaldson?
Yes, I, I guess I'm questioning for the planner Jared. If this was the right zone or any other where, any other place. Does this type of business, does it go in as a right, or is there always public hearings or? That's what I'm trying to understand. Like, we're, we're doing a rezone and we're not making a decision on whether the business can go or not. So I just wonder if it was somewhere else and it met all the, all the distances and it was zoned right zone, would we be having this discussion?
Through you. It's depends on the zone of the property. Most of the, like the light industrial zone that's supposed to go to, that would be permitted as of right. So there's a number of properties in the municipality that are light industrial, heavy industrial. Both of which would permit this as a right for a micro facility. So one of the small facilities as we're discussing tonight, right? For larger called standard licenses under the Cannabis Act. It's, there's normally what's called the development agreement that'd be required for those. That's essentially a contract zone that would get negotiated on an individual property. To help control any issues that could arise with setbacks, things like that. Those, those type of permits under the Cannabis Act have additional. Setback and kind of like security requirements associated with them, so they can be a bit more impactful than a small opera, smaller operation. Yeah, the quick answer is yes, there's a number of opportunity sites that you could go to already for light industrial or heavy industrial. That would just be as a right application.
Okay, so I'm getting this straight now. This is, this is strictly a rezoning application. It's not an application whether this particular business should be able to operate there. It's a rezoning.
Correct. So that through you, if that was kind of the, the broader consideration of council. That would be in a, a plan amendment typically. So we'd be looking to change that, that we should change the entire zoning bylaw itself, right, like use by law, I should say. That would be after all this kind of goes forward and the decision's rendered.
Okay, just wanted to be clear.
Absolutely. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, we have a motion on the floor. Are we ready to call question? Okay, all those in favor signify by raising your hand or saying aye. Contrary minded, raise your hand or say aye. Okay, motion carried. Thank you for all your work, Jared.
Look forward to hearing from the public.
All right, next. We have six. I think it's six B, which will be our low income exemption. There's an attachment. So this, especially I guess for the newer counselors. Typically, we, we have a tax exemption for low income, for low income and these are the. Trying to think of the English word, the zekar, the, the span, I guess, the span that we are looking for. So if.
Threshold.
The, thank you. That's, that's the word. So. We have a two hundred dollar tax exemption that people can apply for if they are below, if their income is below eighteen thousand eight hundred. If their income is below twenty-four thousand one hundred, they can apply for a hundred and fifty dollar tax exemption. And if their income is below twenty-eight thousand dollars, they can apply for a one hundred dollar tax exemption. And there's a chart there that outlines how many people have benefited from this program, how many people have used the program and have been able to have qualified. And we are, my understanding is we are keeping our thresholds at the same number this year. So this is mostly for information. I, I think we can, as long as we agree on consensus on this. Are there any comments or questions about this? Anybody have anything they'd like to, to bring up regarding this? Okay, seeing nobody. So can we have consensus that these numbers stay the same, our threshold stays the same for this upcoming taxation year? Does that sound okay? Yes?
So we don't need a, a motion on that then?
I asked C A O Muse if we needed a motion on that and he said because the numbers stayed the same, we don't necessarily need a motion that we can, we can agree to this by.
You don't need a motion if we change them.
Right. Did you have something you wanted to add, Councilor Sarek? That, is that what you were going to say? Okay, so do we have consensus to keep these numbers the same? Yes, that works. Perfect. Okay. We can move on. Next, six C, we have, whoops, we have S P A, S P C A services. So in the past, we have paid for our dog services through the S P C A. And they are looking at, so our contract is coming due the end of March. And we typically had a two-year contract and this year it's looking like a better deal. Actually, they're looking to extend for a three-year contract with kind of a bit of a freeze in what they're charging. So. We would be looking at paying, and this is a shared service. And we, right between the three and we would, our share would be twenty-nine thousand four hundred and forty-five dollars to keep. To use their services for us, the S P C A services for dog services. So that would be our value share. If we agree to the terms of the three-year contract and this is what we would pay. So we're looking, is there any conference, any discussion about this? Questions?
I would like to make a motion.
You make that motion?
I would move that C A O coordinate and sign a three-year service agreement with S P C A. For dog bylaw services at annual cost of twenty-nine thousand four forty-five.
Thank you. Do we have a second or to the motion? Uh, Councilor Donaldson, thank you. Are there any questions, comments on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by raising your hand. Contrary minded, you can raise your hand or say nay. Motion carried. Thank you. It's easy when we're spending less money than what we were supposed to. It's kind of a no-brainer. D. Lyme disease awareness month. So we received this, the warden and I, I think it was. I think it was just sent to the warden and I, I'm not sure. Did all counselors receive this email? No, okay. So this was a letter. Basically, they're talking about statistics of Lyme disease in our area. And as you can see, I was, to be honest, when I read this, it says that in two thousand and nineteen, Nova Scotia had. Eight hundred and thirty confirmed probable cases of Lyme disease, to be honest, and that was probably more than that. Really, we've seen a significant increase in Lyme disease in this area in the last little bit. So they're looking to have. The month of May, I believe. As Lyme disease awareness month and they would like the support of our council. So what is the wish of council on this? Do we, is this something we would like to, to see happen? Warden Muse?
Is that something, is that, uh, something that we do? In the past, have we done, and, and not this one in particular, but, but to, to, to proclaim. As a municipality, uh, uh, that type of request, like to, to.
I don't ever remember doing.
I don't remember doing that. And I thought there was a time when we had discussed that we don't go into these, these things. So. I'm just wondering if that's still the case or, or how we would do that, like by, by, by doing that.
Yes, Sam.
Our, our practice has been, we used to get them all the time. We get less and less of them now and maybe it's because we, we just ignored them, I don't know, but. I shouldn't laugh, it's not funny, but, but, you know, our practice has been to not do this because we were getting a lot of them. And I think the councils at the time didn't really see how it was. Gonna make.
Benefit.
A difference in, I mean, not to suggest that any and all of these are, are important and, and, and they certainly are important to those that are asking. So there was a practice, not a policy, but a practice that, that said, you know, let's, let's stop that. But I mean. I guess I, I received a couple and, and wanted to just ask the question again because different councils may want different things.
Okay, was there anybody else who'd like to speak on this? Councilor Sarek?
Oh, I just tend to be a little different maybe this time, where Lyme disease is such a big issue, especially in this county. I wouldn't mind making an exception to this time. I understand what the warden said, what our C A O said, but. Where it's such a, you know, a big thing down here, I would mind to make a motion that. We do proclaim May two thousand twenty-one as Lyme disease awareness month, just for this one.
So you're about to make that a motion?
Yes, I am making that motion.
Okay, do we have a second on that motion? Councilor Donaldson, good. Any other conversation, discussion? Councilor Dinkin, you want to say something?
Uh, thank you. And I'd go one step further. As far as just maybe putting up this lady's contact number and name. For, I know she has a support group and also available for questions and answers. There's so much not known about Lyme disease and it's the, one of the first support groups I've heard in Nova Scotia. About it. And I just feel as though some people may be interested in talking with her and that. Because it's, it's hard to talk about something when you've never been through it or nothing like that. And she may be a good support. For someone. So, yeah, I'd be all for it.
Okay, Councilor Sonia?
Thank you, Madam Chair. In support of Gee and, and Glenn, I, I think that. Lyme disease has been somewhat of a silent disease lately. And a lot of people have been going undiagnosed and got really sick. So with that respect, maybe awareness would help to. To, to stop prolonging this, this illness, so to speak.
Thank you. I agree. A while ago, we had a meeting with M L A LeBlanc, Colton LeBlanc, two years ago, I think. And it was something that I brought up actually to him because I had Lyme disease, I was diagnosed with Lyme disease. And a couple of, about a year and a half ago and still had recurrences of Lyme disease and it's hard to get answers. It is hard to know what flares up your Lyme disease. And basically you take course after course of really, really difficult antibiotics. And there's, because there's so much unknown and there is no vaccine for it, yet there is vaccines for dogs. You can get test results for dogs at the vets in ten minutes, but if you go for blood work, it takes weeks and weeks before you get, you get. Your results. So personally, I'm, I'm glad you said what you said, Councilor Sarek, because this is something that I would certainly support. And mostly in part because it's something that I've been through myself. C A O Muse, yes?
Uh, on, on the issue of, of doing these, these, you know, designating the months of awareness. You know, traditionally, what would happen is council would make a motion and, and nothing else would occur, right? You would, you would just, you would file. This is entirely different, you know, like so if, if this council. Really wants to step up and say, we want to increase the awareness of this particular, that's a completely different scenario, completely different situation. That I think properly highlights this work. Because that's what, that's what these organizations are looking for is for you to take on. These things in, in a way. And so, you know, certainly if, if that's the will of council. We will certainly not only declare, but we, we will with the help of, of those that are asking to get. You know, we'll, we'll post like regular information on Lyme disease on our website, for instance, and, and try to, not website, Facebook. To try to get people like, like scheduled posts to try to get people understanding more. So if that's the will of council, it can be done.
Okay.
So I thank you for, for the discussion. It's very helpful for us to understand what you want.
Okay, so then C A O Muse, do we leave our motion as is? Do we amend that? How, how do we proceed with that? Because Councilor Sarek made the, the motion that we support the proclamation, but do we want to add anything more to that to trigger? To trigger kind of for us to pursue that?
You, you can, you can, if, if, if the mover in the second or so wish, you can amend to say that. And that we would, and, and that we would enter into a communications process to increase that awareness. So you're not declaring. But that you're, you're actually engaging actively in that.
Okay.
And I will, I will do that, Madam Chair. I will add that on if, if Rory has grabbed, grabbed onto that.
Absolutely. And that's okay with you for the second or Councilor Donaldson? Sounds good. Any other comments, questions? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor signify by raising your hand. Contrary minded, raise your hand. Motion carried. Thank you. Next, six C, we have transparency. So there is an attachment. Added in about transparency. And as C A O Muse said, I don't want to read the whole attachment, but, but I think to summarize. There have been issues where especially I think when it comes down to regional meetings. Not every counselor necessarily gets an invitation to a regional committee meeting. So for example. When it comes to the Mariner Center, there are several subcommittees and not every counselor has the ability to go to those meetings. So sometimes it makes you wonder what, what, what has been said at those meetings. So. I think this comes back to counselors want to be kept in the loop as to what's going on and. Because we're all affected by every, even if it's a regional committee, we're all in it, right? We all have to have the information in order to make the, the decisions that, the necessary decisions. So. When we're talking about transparency, I think the, the request is that counselors, like how can we go about to have a consistent way? Of inviting other counselors to those meetings, to those committee meetings and then being able to see the minutes so that we all have the same information. I think that's kind of, does that sum up? I know, uh, Councilor Dinkin, you kind of, we've talked about this before, but do you feel like that is kind of the right direction?
That is exactly the right direction as far as I'm concerned. The counselors, I feel as though want to be kept in. The, within with the information and I feel as though the only way we can keep our people. And that, that we represent. With the material net is if we know the material that's being said at these meetings. And transparency like for two thousand twenty-one, that's a big thing. That's why a lot of. Of people lose faith in their elected officials is because of lack of transparency and lack of answers. So I so, we would so happy to make this motion here this evening. And go from there, that the C A O or his designate, designate creates. And or amend policy to increase council and citizens' access to an inclusion on regional meetings. And that the policy be shared and presented to our partners for implementation.
Thank you. Is there a second on that motion? Uh, Warden Muse, thank you. Are there any comments or concerns about that motion? Yes, Councilor Donaldson? Unmute.
Just to make a comment, I joined the meeting the other day, I believe it was the Mariner Center Steering Committee to, for funding for. The former Y M C A building and. I found the setup very good. Like they couldn't see me. I could see everything that was going on and could hear everything. So that way. I can't butt in or somebody can't butt in where they're not supposed to and they don't really know who's watching. So you get all the information. So. Is that exactly the kind of setup we're talking about here?
I think that that's potentially one possibility, especially when we're having Zoom meetings. That's the perfect opportunity right there. When we, if we ever go back in regular meetings, I think part of that would be, you could still, and I know Councilor, Councilor Dinkin has brought this up before. You could still be invited to those meetings, but you don't necessarily get the, the chance to vote on things, but you're there to. But you're there to hear the information, right? And I know for the Mariner Centre as well, one of the things that we've decided upon is that the minutes, once the minutes of the, the different committee meetings are approved, they're going to be added to the Mariner Centre website. They're all going to be housed there so that if anybody wants to read the minutes of what are, what's going on in those meetings, they will all be there. So whether it's a councillor or a member of the public, so that there is total transparency on what is going on in that project. But you're right, through Zoom, like I, uh, when I'm in one of those committee meetings, I have no idea who's there from the public watching. I, I have no idea. Uh, Warden Muse?
Yeah, and, and one thing too, that, that we're doing with these meetings is they're being recorded.
Yes.
And, and then if, if a councillor doesn't have time to attend at the time of the meeting, you can always go back and watch the meeting, and that's, that's a good, to me, that's a good, uh, thing to have. Because if we have to start attending every meeting that everybody has, it doesn't fit everybody's schedule, you know, and, and how many meetings do we want to, to? And then that way you can pick and choose the ones that you really want to, to know what's going on. I mean, I'm not interested in going to every, to every, uh, 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 committee meeting or whatever. I mean, I, I go to, I go to enough that I have to. But, but at least with these, you have the opportunity to, to watch them at your own convenience once they're, once they're posted on, on, on the, uh, especially that the Mariner Centre, they will be posted on the Mariner Centre's, uh, uh, website as far as I know. Same with the minutes, so I think that's good as well.
That's a great point, I, I had forgotten completely about that. Any other conversation, any other comments or questions about that? Yes, CAO Muse?
Uh, one comment is, one of the things that we could consider doing differently at the council table is when we do our council reports, what we do is we go by councillor, right? Which is appropriate and so on. An alternative way to do that is to actually call the meetings themselves. So, you know, and, and other municipal units have done this. This is a suggestion for you to think about, uh, a little bit outside of, of the motion slightly. I mean, it's the same topic, but I, I won't work on this unless you want me to. But it's, it's the concept that, you know, you know, Counselor Boudreaux is on waste check and he's on this and he's on that, and you call those meetings out, and then one of the two, or if, you know, maybe there's multiple councillors that are on it, report on that particular meeting, rather than report on, you know, how they're doing it now. Uh, and so, um, it, it would just be a verbal, uh, update because there are minutes for those organizations, so there wouldn't be the need for a, a written report. I, I know that councillors haven't always been that fond of a written report, uh, and especially if they can do it verbally. So that's a suggestion that, that it will line up what you do in each committee as well. I leave that to you for your consideration.
Okay. What is the wish of council, Counselor Digden?
Uh, thank you, uh, just, uh, the only reason I kept pushing for the Mariner Centre or anything that may be happening around there, or the airport, is that this, there's just so many dollars and that from Argyle that go into both of those places. And, uh, like hundreds of thousands of dollars sometimes. So I just want to be able to say I was at those meetings, or here's what, what I, on at those meetings or stuff like that. Because again, you can have six or eight or ten people in a room and everybody seems to hear different things sometimes, so that's all, thank you.
Absolutely. Any other comments or questions?
Question?
Question's been called, all those in favor signify by saying aye, or raising your hand, sorry. Uh, contrary, raise your hand, say aye, good, motion carried. Did you get everything you needed from us, CAO Muse? You did, okay. Okay. Um, next we have the financial statement. So I'm gonna just pass that right over to CAO Muse. You're muted.
That is that, that, that doesn't happen very often.
I know.
I, I know you all want to do it, but it doesn't always happen. You don't have to answer, you can.
I will suggest that you leave it there.
Uh, that, that is, uh, that's a great suggestion. So, uh, we're not going to do a deep, deep dive in this because we did that in December. So I'm only going to talk about the, the estimated surplus at the end of the year. So again, just three things, number one, um, we're expecting a total surplus of two hundred and fourteen thousand at the end of January twenty twenty-one. Uh, some of that surplus doesn't belong to us, it belongs to West Pumnico, Tuscat and other, uh, um, operations that, that, uh, that have their own, uh, surplus. So the surplus that relates entirely to our operations is a hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars. Again, this is, this is estimated, um, uh, pro rate, in some cases, pro rated numbers, uh, at the end of January. It's, it's a, it's a pretty accurate reflection. Again, I, I am predicting a surplus, um. Uh, two or three factors you need to just be reminded of, one is, is that the safe income has not been reflected here yet. Um, so that will even increase that surplus more for the amounts that we claim under that fund. Um, number two, the, um, de-transfer tax revenues are still hot. So, um, I think it was twelve thousand at the end of January. That is an extraordinarily high number for, for January, right? So that, that would typically be your spring, summer number, right? So, um, so it's still hot, so that's still going to impact positively the bottom line. Uh, I am seeing in, in moving forward, I mean, those are all good news stories. Uh, moving forward, there's still some unpredictability around, around COVID and, and its impacts on assessment, et cetera. Um, so I say, yes, we will have a surplus. But what I will also say is, right now, they're saying that the RCMP costs might go up by five percent. Um, that sounds like, you know, five percent, five percent, that's sixty-three thousand dollars for us. So it's those kinds of things that I would, that I'm, you know, as we get closer into budget, we're going to get more information. Um, we've seen in the past that RCMP predicted, uh, percentage increases have been high at first, and then we, we see them, uh, potentially taper or lower before we get to the actual, uh, budget. So it's still an estimate at this time, but I'm just, you know, I, I don't like to give the, the entirety of good news without expressing the fact that things change pretty fast. Um, so that would be the extent of the financial report, still in great shape this year. Still some unpredictability coming, uh, our way, uh, in the coming year. So I'll stop there, and then if there's any questions, I'll.
Are there any questions, any comments about the financials, Counselor Surratt?
Yeah, guess who? I've been that one to ask this question to your worship for a while. And I wonder if I can explain myself. On the revenue side, if we don't transfer from reserve and does it affect our, does it affect our, if we're in the black or the red at the end? And is it really, are we in the black? Do you understand what I'm trying to say?
Uh, I do, I, I absolutely understand your question one hundred percent.
Yeah, okay.
So what, I'll repeat the question.
Yes, if you could.
Or clear on, and I'm going to repeat it in my own words.
Yes.
You, what you're wondering is
Yeah.
how much of the revenue that is showing here includes a transfer from the operating reserve?
Yes.
Because in the budget, we had budgeted a transfer from the operating reserve.
Yeah.
The answer to your question is that there is no amount coming from, uh, that line item. So, so what we've done is we've already, we've already anticipated the surplus. We would not bring in money from the operating reserve if the operating fund was sufficient. So while we predicted that we would use it, we're not going to use it. And these numbers reflect that. Now, there are other transfers that are coming in as revenue, but they're non-cash items. So, so the answer to your question is, we will have a surplus and it will not include any transfer from the operating reserve. If that makes sense.
Completely understand, thank you. That makes a lot of sense, thank you for that.
All right.
Were there any other questions for the CAO? Okay, seeing none, do we, we make a motion to move that, I can't remember?
Uh, to, to accept.
To accept, okay. Can we have, um, Counselor Surratt made a motion to accept the financial, uh, statement? And it's seconded by Counselor Bork. Any questions, any comments? Okay, all those in favor signify by raising your hand. Contrary minded, raise your hand. Motion carried, thank you. So we are now at correspondence and for information, so eight A. We had, um, we had sent a letter to the Minister Bernadette Jordan, Minister of Fisheries and Oceans. Um, the warden sent a letter and there is, her response is there for you all to see. Um, we also had it for B, there's, there are two attachments in B. There is, um, an attachment of eight pages that are testimonials, basically of people who have sent in testimonials of the importance of the former YMCA and what it meant to them. And of course, those are in support of, of a new bridge service, right? They're still looking for a quad, first, for a pool. Um, there's also another letter from a, uh, YCAP parent. We also in C, we have a letter from our MLA Colton LeBlanc to the Department of Health and Wellness, which we've discussed several times. And I think Counselor Digden knows a little bit about this one. And our declining, um, emergency services. And then there is some correspondence on fire ponds. So there was a memo on the fire pond update, it's a project that we've been working on. And, um, it was really big and we're zoning in. I, I think it kind of gave a summary of how we're zoning in on, on certain ponds right now. Um, and the direction that we're going with that, yes, Counselor Surratt?
Uh, comment and then a question to the CAO. The comment, the first commented on, on the Fisheries Minister. I wouldn't let, uh, her take care of my goldfish, according to that response, that's an insult to me. That's number one, number two, on the fire ponds, uh, I let, uh, do, do we have a, an actual number, a number, uh, as far as financials? Of what, or you're not there yet at all, a total number?
Well, we were, uh, thanks for the question, uh, through the chair. We had fifty thousand earmarked, uh, we will not be spending nearly that this year, not because we didn't want to, only that we, we, we hit some problems. So we started to do signage and we started to do some changes, um, and then, and then some of the private owners were like, hey, wait a minute, this isn't a fire pond to me. So it was like, oh, well, you know, we did, you know, so what we did was we went to the fire departments and the fire chiefs and said, what do you use fire ponds traditionally? And they gave us the answer. Well, the public that owned the property may have had a slightly different answer in certain cases, right? So, so we, it, it helped, it, we, we paused, and so we were, you know, you know, um, kind of got a little hell of, ahead of ourselves a little bit there. Uh, but that being said, while we were trying to reorganize, we did, you know, we did isolate the ones that weren't, were owned by the public. And we, we, um, are confident that, uh, TIR or whatever they're called today, uh, will be putting guardrails in some strategic areas, which I think would solve the problem. Um, you know, two in your district, in fact, if, if not three, uh, actually, there are three in your district councillor. Um, uh, anyway, they're, they're two and six point one and more silent. And, um, so those, those, they've been identified as an issue, TIR will determine whether, whether they agree. And, uh, and I'm confident that in at least two cases, we'll see something. Uh, because they are clearly a danger, they're right off the road, and if you ever, if you're in. So, um, there are others that we can address, and, and quite frankly, there are others that should come off the list. Um, and we should refocus our efforts on understanding where fire departments should be getting their water in light of climate change. Because we have traditional fire ponds that, you know, the fence around because there's no water. Uh, you know, it's the safest mud pit, mud and dirt that you would find in the, in the municipality. So we, that was the other reason why we, we did a little bit of time. It wasn't to disrespect the intent of council. It was to make sure that we understand it in a broader sense before we, we go in. And I think we got a little ahead of ourselves.
Sounds good. Any other comments? Okay, next we have a financial request, nine A. Uh, we have a financial request for a community grant from Echol Pumnico West, and I believe that that is from Counselor Digden's area.
Uh, yes, it is, thank you very much. I, uh, reached out to Claudette Dontrama, who was the principal of the school down here, and I heard that they were having trouble with the cafeteria program. And, um, looking this evening, I guess I'd like to put in form motion and that, that I, we give five hundred dollars as a grant. Uh, that's five hundred dollars I have left of my three thousand, so I'm officially broke as of now. Uh, but I'm also going to reach out to Claudette. I honestly feel as though, um, if they need help, uh, up there, and this is just personally, uh, that we can do better for them. Um, I'm gonna look at maybe a fundraiser or something, or whatever she feels as though they may need because, uh, this is children and food. And, uh, we, we just have to, I'm going to be reaching out, but for this evening, I'm looking for the five hundred dollars anyway for them.
Sounds good, do we have a second on that motion? Counselor Bork, thank you. All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Contrary, raise your hand. Motion carried. Number ten, agenda topics for next meeting, notice a motion by councillors. Are there any councillors who have an agenda topic for next meeting? Yes, Counselor Boudreaux? Half unmute, Counselor Boudreaux?
There we go.
There you go.
I got a letter from Joseph Jackard, he's the president of, uh, uh, l'association des académies sur le croix, and he's asking for a grant to our organization for five hundred dollars. If could bring that up there, the, uh, on the agenda for next, next meeting, that'd be great.
Do you still have, do you have that letter, Counselor Boudreaux?
Yes, I do.
Okay, um, typically what we do is we submit them to Laurie and Laurie will upload it. And when the next, at the next meeting, we'll do just like we did with Counselor Digden, and we'll bring it up again and we'll make a motion to, to approve that.
Perfect.
Okay?
Awesome, thank you.
You're welcome. Uh, CAO Muse?
We'll check on the availability of district community grant funds. So if, if this is expired, then we'll, we'll flip it into the new year.
Yeah, we'll hold off until the next budget. Okay, anyone else there, looks good, all right. Question period, were there any questions from the, I think, on social media? No in camera, so we're looking for somebody to move to adjourn. Thank you, Counselor Bork, do we have a second on that? Thank you, Counselor Donaldson, all those in favor?